I will take you up on your kind offer to make that quick announcement after the roll call.
Absolutely.
And Dara, can I get co-host permissions to share my screen, please?
Yes, just meet you a co-host.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Hello, Jim.
Evening.
Well, do we have everybody logged on?
Let's see, I'm just trying to scroll through here. I don't know if Dawn has joined yet. It doesn't look like a month in that he has, but.
It's tricky because we just have to recognize his phone number.
Dara, if you could just let us know when it looks like Dawn has joined.
Sure, I don't see him yet.
Okay. Well, I'll just defer to the chair. If you want to get started, it is seven oh three. If you want to wait another minute, that's fine. So I'll just let you let you decide.
Okay, well, we'll get started in just a moment. Well, good evening, everyone, and I would like to bring the meeting of February seventh, twenty twenty-two, the San Carlos Planning Commission. And the RDRC, I guess. To order. And as always, we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
America.
And to the Republic of which stands one nation under God.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Sorry, I just caught a little off because we have a joint meeting. I'm going to go and start with the RDRC. So I'm going to call on committee member. And committee member Eugene Sekai.
Present.
Commissioner Jim Jacoponi.
Present.
Commissioner Garvey.
Present.
Commissioner Bradley. Chair Clements. I believe I didn't see.
Yeah, I thought we saw.
Oh, she's.
Vice Chair Clements, we didn't hear your voice.
I'm having technical difficulties. I may drop and come back.
Okay.
And Chair Ruth.
Present.
Chair Ruth, this is Ellen Garvey. If I might interrupt for just a quick ten-second announcement before the next agenda item. Many of you may notice I'm not. My video is not on tonight. I just have a photo. I've got a bandage on my face, so I thought it would be best if I participated tonight. Without the video, so I'm here. You just won't see me moving around too much. Just thank you for the opportunity to let everybody know.
Okay, thanks for letting us know. No problem. And the next item is public comment for items that are not on the agenda. And public comment is limited, limited in this. Topic, public comment is limited to items not on the agenda. The commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act. Government Code Section five four nine five four dot two. However, the commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on a future commission agenda for more comprehensive action or report. Do we have anyone in the waiting room for a? A comment?
There are none at this time.
Okay, well, thank you. We can, and we can move along to the next item. Which is new business. And our business today is an update on the Senate Bill nine urgency ordinance. And to start that topic, do we have a presentation from staff?
Yes, we do, Chair Ruth. Good evening and good evening to RDRC committee members. Lisa Porras, Planning Manager. I will be making the presentation to you this evening. This item is a presentation on an urgency ordinance that was recently adopted by the city council in response to Senate Bill nine and what our next steps will be to create a more permanent ordinance. So we want to start off with a brief explanation about SB nine, Senate Bill nine, and then discuss why an urgency ordinance was adopted. And then dive into more detail about SB nine itself and inform the commission about key regulations contained in the recently adopted urgency ordinance. And then share the timeline for the next steps, take some questions and answers. And I'd also just like to remind the commission and the committee members and the public that may be watching that no formal action is requested or required at this time. This is really an update to the Planning Commission and RDRC members about the recent activity that just took place. So just a quick introduction about Senate Bill nine. Well, first of all, it went into effect January one this year. It is a new state law that affords some several development provisions, particularly in single-family neighborhoods. So what the new state law allows is for subdivisions to occur, and these subdivisions can be as small as twelve hundred square feet. It also allows development of up to two residential units on each resulting or subsequent lot. Or even if there is not a subdivision, it does afford some additional development in single-family neighborhoods. There's more to the law, but this is the general kind of underpinnings of what the state law allows. And furthermore, that under this, these provisions, this type of development and subdivision is required to be minister approved, which means that there's no discretionary review or public hearing required. It can be done at staff level. But just to give the commission and committee members some context, in San Carlos, as you can see here on this zoning map, a majority of the land is devoted to single-family neighborhoods, which are shown in the yellow, in the yellow shaded colors. These two zones in our city are RS three and RS six, and together they comprise about just over eight thousand individual parcels. And of those parcels, we had some initial analysis done. I think this information is from the Turner Center. But of the eligible parcels that could develop under these, this new provision of SB nine law is a little bit less than that, at about six, six thousand four hundred parcels that could potentially under these provisions should the property owners decide to decide to exercise that. And so because of this new law, staff basically. You know, under the premise that SB nine could create unmanaged change in the city's single-family neighborhoods, staff brought forth an urgency ordinance to council for consideration on January tenth earlier this year. And staff explained to the city council that there was a chance that under SB nine, you could alter the single-family residential neighborhoods in a character that's much different from what it looks like today. And then without local regulations, it could lead to potentially unorderly SB nine projects, and there could also be multiple interpretations of state law. So from a practical standpoint, we have our zoning ordinance, which is codified and in place. But where there were, would be conflicts within these new provisions under SB nine, it could lead to some confusion. So this was a reason why staff felt it was important to bring forward something in the interim that could really provide more clarity and reduce interpretations about what the state law actually affords. So in addition to that, it would also provide the city with more time to engage with the community and to work with the planning commission to develop a more permanent ordinance, and of course, do some more analysis and to make sure that other areas of the zoning ordinance are compatible and consistent with the state provisions. As I mentioned, not every lot is eligible to develop under SB nine. And there are, under state law, these are basically the areas where SB nine would not be allowed to be exercised. So for any parcels that are located in a historic district or within wetland, a wetland delineated area or within the one hundred-year flood plain or floodway, or in a high fire hazard severity zone, or on a hazardous waste site, or delineated, in a delineated earthquake zone, they would not be eligible to move forward with SB nine subdivision and subsequent development. In addition to that, if any such development would alter or demolish any deed-restricted affordable housing or rent-controlled housing, or where a tenant has occupied, been occupying housing in the past three years, that would also make the parcel ineligible to operate under SB nine. So this is both for properties that would choose to exercise a subdivision, or whether they chose not to exercise a subdivision. Any of these factors come into play, then it's not eligible to proceed under SB nine. So there's essentially, so kind of diving into what does SB nine do and allow, there's essentially three components of SB nine. It allows up to two-unit development. And so these could be two units that are an existing unit and a new unit that's developed, and it doesn't need to be subordinate, like an accessory dwelling unit is typically smaller in size and scaled than the primary unit. So you might consider this, an example of that would be like duplex development. That would be allowed by right under SB nine. And again, like I mentioned before, it allows an urban lot split and lot sizes as small as twelve hundred square feet. And then it does provide a component that allows for an extension of a subdivision map. And I already mentioned that it weighs discretionary review. So the development standards that the state sets forth under a parcel in a single-family neighborhood that chooses not to subdivide, but simply to exercise those development standards on development, development under SB nine would be that the minimum unit size of an SB nine unit has to be at least eight hundred square feet. So cities could not regulate something smaller than eight hundred square feet. You have to allow at least hundred, eight hundred, eight hundred square feet. That is within the state law. It also requires that the interior side yard and rear yard of the property, the setback is allowed to be just four feet from the interior side and rear setback lines. Under this type of situation, ADUs and JDUs would also be allowed to continue under the current regulations that are in place for ADUs and JDs. And let me just back up for a second and say that what I mean by this are accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. There are no short-term rentals would be allowed for this type of new SB nine unit. And the state law does require that one parking space be provided for that additional SB nine unit, but there are some exceptions that apply. Now, in a situation where a property owner may choose to exercise the subdivision component of SB nine, all of the development, except for one development regulations that I just mentioned, including the eight hundred square feet, the minimum interior side and rear setbacks of four feet and no short-term rentals, and a one parking space for SB nine would still carry forward. The only difference is that under a subdivision situation, the city can choose whether or not they want to allow an additional ADU, an accessory dwelling unit, and a junior accessory dwelling unit. So in addition to that, because we're talking about a subdivision component, in this example, each resulting lot has to have certain size thresholds. And what I mean by that is that the lot must be forty percent of the original parcel size. I already mentioned before that the minimum size of the parcel can be as small as twelve hundred square feet. There are regulations under state law in place that would not allow any sequential lot splits. So say, for example, you had a ten thousand square foot lot and you wanted to exercise SB nine, create two five thousand square foot lots, you could do so. But because the minimum lot size is twelve hundred square feet, one might think, well, you can subdivide it even more. But that's not the case. It's a one-time lot split under SB nine. But it just means that if you have a really small parcel, you can get as low as, as small as twelve hundred square feet. If you, if, if one decided they wanted to do that. There's also a three-year owner occupancy requirement on, on one of the resulting lots, meaning that if a property owner decided to subdivide, they would need to live on either one of the resulting lots for at least three years. And as I mentioned before, cities have the option to restrict max, a maximum of two units per lot. So let me just sort of break this down graphically. I think these are some great slides that were prepared previously for the council that really describe how this works. So what can be provided under current state law? Under current state law, you can essentially have up to three units on a parcel. And how that works out is that you have your primary unit on the lot. And then we also have state regulations that permit an accessory dwelling unit. And in addition to that, a junior accessory dwelling unit. So technically, those, these types of units are individual and they do add up to three units. And this is what can currently be done right now. And so when SB nine came into effect, what changed? Well, it allowed an additional primary unit to be developed on that lot. So again, with at least a four-foot side and rear yard setback, you could build up to eight hundred square feet of an additional unit on the property, which would allow for an increase from three to four housing units on a parcel, no subdivision. This is what the state law would allow. So just as an example of the development intensity, kind of using just kind of a very simple case study here. If we were to look at a five thousand square foot lot, under our current ordinance and under our current maximum floor area standard that we have in place, in this particular case, you could have up to thirty-eight hundred square feet of development, which is comprised by a three thousand square foot, single-family home, plus at least eight hundred square feet for an ADU. And I, in this example, I think the JADU is contained within the three thousand square foot, a single-family residence. And I do have a team of my colleagues here. They can answer questions on the, if there's any questions on, on the calculations for this slide. So when SB nine came into, into play, if you look at the graphic on the right, it would allow even more development because under SB nine, you are allowed to build another primary unit of at least eight hundred square feet. So if we add that additional eight hundred square feet, the three thousand square feet primary home, plus the eight hundred square foot ADU, and another eight hundred square foot SB nine unit, the development intensity would increase from thirty-eight hundred to forty-six hundred square feet on a single-family lot. Now with, if in, in the example where someone would choose to subdivide their property, there's actually here a decision point or a policy decision that cities can make. So what the state law says you have to allow, at least, you have to allow at least, is the example on the left-hand side. So this is an example where one lot is subdivided into two. And then each resulting lot can have a maximum of two units on the property. The state law says that cities do not have to allow, under a subdivision situation, that is, they do not have to allow an additional accessory dwelling unit, nor an additional junior accessory dwelling unit. However, cities could choose to do so, which is graphically displayed on the image on the right-hand side. So this is on the right-hand side, it shows the existing primary unit, plus the new SB nine unit. And if cities want to allow, under a subdivision application, an additional ADU and a JADU, they could. So we're going to talk about what the urgency ordinance set into place. But ultimately, what staff recommended and what was adopted and included in the urgency ordinance was a limitation. Staff, and I'll explain the reasons for that, but staff recommended that no ADUs or JADUs be allowed under the urgency ordinance without further evaluation and a discussion with the community and the planning commission. So it sort of did the minimum under what the state law affords right now. So some of the key points contained in the urgency ordinance that was recently adopted is that for a parcel where there is no subdivision, say a property owner just wants to exercise the development provisions under SB nine, they could get four units per lot. And what those four units could consist of are two primary units, plus an ADU and a JADU. There would be a limitation on eight hundred square feet. Now, the state doesn't say you have to stop at eight hundred square feet. It basically says you have to allow for at least eight hundred square feet, no less. So cities could choose to make that larger. Something that we can look at as we evaluate and do the analysis for a more permanent ordinance further down the road. But for now, in the urgency ordinance that we just adopted, we did set the limit at the state's allowance for, for at least eight hundred square feet. The minimum front setbacks would be the same as the underlying zoning ordinance, so we wanted to provide some clarity on that. It's clear that the state requires only four feet from the side and rear property lines, but we wanted to establish some clarity about the front. So that would stay the same as is currently outlined and codified in our existing zoning ordinance. The urgency ordinance did set into place a sixteen-foot maximum height limit on the SB nine unit. However, for properties that are located in the hillside overlay district, those, those SB nine units would be allowed to be a little bit taller, up to twenty feet. And then we, in terms of the parking space required for an SB nine unit, we established that it should be uncovered. And we made it very clear, consistent with state law, that there's no short-term rental allowed, meaning one could not rent out the unit for less than thirty days. And we also clarified that the SB nine unit can be rented separate from the primary unit. So again, all of this is on any existing parcel as it exists today without any subdivision. These are the provisions that would be allowed under the existing urgency ordinance. Now, with the subdivision application, if someone wanted to subdivide the lot, then we're going to limit it down to two, a maximum of two units per lot. We're keeping the same eight hundred square foot maximum for the new SB nine unit. They're providing more clarity that no ADUs or JDs, JADUs would be allowed in this situation. Again, similar to a non-subdivided type of project, we have to allow four-foot side and rear setbacks. We did carry forward the sixteen-foot maximum height limitation, twenty-foot for hillside, same as under the non-subdivision types of application. And then clarified that the parking space again would be uncovered. And essentially, the remainder of the points are similar to what we saw previously, a three-year owner occupancy, occupancy requirement, and no short-term rental, less than thirty days, and clarified SB nine, we rent, SB nine unit can be rented separate from the primary unit. So when we went to the council, staff had done quite a bit of research and looked at a total of six different cities. Burlingame, Palo Alto, Cupertino, Los Altos, Mill Valley, and San Jose. And all of these cities has, have adopted, or were in the process of adopting, either an urgency ordinance or a more formal ordinance. And we did take a look to see what cities were doing. I think one of the main policy decisions in, in this SB nine cases is kind of, you know, what size, or how big of a unit you can build. Should it be greater than eight hundred square feet? And for subdivided applications, are we going to allow an additional ADU and JADU? So in the Burlingame example, they opted for a maximum of two units under a lot split situation where ADUs and JDs would not be allowed. And the same with Cupertino. But other cities such as San Jose, they decided to obviously be consistent with state law and allow two units on a, on a subdivided property. But in addition to that, there would also be an allowance for an ADU and a JADU. So this is just to provide some context of what other cities have done and are doing. So the next steps in this process is that the urgency ordinance again was adopted on January tenth, and it is good for forty-five days. Cities have the option to extend an urgency ordinance, and staff is team up an urgency ordinance extension for the city council to consider on February fourteen. And such extension would allow the ordinance to be in place for ten and a half more months. And with that ten and a half more months, again, it gives staff more time to meet with the community, to do more analysis, to make sure that these provisions are consistent with our existing regulations, or I should say, not consistent, but they are compatible. There's no conflict in place. And, and eventually, we would have a more permanent ordinance on SB nine and be able to tackle some of those key policy decisions with the community, the planning commission, and ultimately through adoption by the city council. So as we look ahead, to develop a more permanent ordinance, we're looking at several milestones for the process. We definitely want to start doing outreach with the community. We're looking at an anticipated timeframe for the month of April to do that. And then moving forward into May, we would further refine development regulations contained, that are already contained in the urgency ordinance based upon feedback from the community. After that, we would bring something forward to the planning commission in the context of a study session. We would hear comments from the planning commission and then further fine-tune the ordinance in the month of July. And thereafter, in early August, we would meet with our city council, two-member city council housing subcommittee to give them an update on the process and what we're hearing and learning from the community and our commission. And then later that month, we would go back to the planning commission, seeking a formal recommendation to city council about whether to adopt such ordinance. And then in the month of September, we would take forward an ordinance to the city council for what we refer to as the first reading of the ordinance. And then we would come back in the month of October to have the second reading of the ordinance. When the city council adopts a new ordinance for SB nine on October twenty-fourth, if it ends up being exactly the state, then the new ordinance would take effect thirty days thereafter. So this concludes my presentation, but before I close, I just wanted to inform the commission and RDRC members and any members of the public that may be watching. You may want to know, well, how do you get involved? How are you going to, you know, know when and where and the logistics for when that April community workshop is going to happen? Well, we want you to go to our SB nine webpage. We have a webpage, a new webpage just for this project, www.cityofsancarlos.org forward slash SB nine. If you go there, you can sign up on the web link to get updates. And so we'll collect your email address and then send you updates for what's happening and the exact dates and times for any opportunities to get engaged and be part of the process. We're also going to let the public know about upcoming workshops and key points to get involved through our social media outlets. We do have a city Facebook page, city Nextdoor page, city Twitter and Instagram account. So if you follow us there, we'll be pushing out information on those platforms. And then as I mentioned before, the engagement opportunities that the public can take part of is the community workshop, the planning commission study session, and then the formal hearings held by the planning commission and city council in the late summer, early fall of this year. And then if you have any questions or want to get back to us and, or just need some help on how to get engaged, you can always email our project manager, who is assigned as Judy Hawk. Her email is at the bottom of the screen. And so with that, I just wanted to let the planning commission that I'm joined tonight by Andrea Marticich, our current principal planner for current overseeing current planning, and then also Rucha Danday, who is our associate planner with current planning. And we are available to answer any questions you may have. We also, I do also have a slide for public comment when the commission and committee is ready to move forward. We also, I do also have a slide for public comment when the commission and committee is ready to move forward. With that, and then excuse my typo on this slide, you should read planning commission and RDRC questions. Thank you.
Hey, thank you for the presentation. And so now we'll entertain. Clarifying questions from the planning commission and from the RDRC. And then we'll open for public comment and then we'll close the public comment and have an opportunity for. Discussion about the. About our opinions on the, on the. On the matter. So clarifying questions from the planning commission or the RDRC. I see commission vice chair Clements has a question.
Thank you, Chair. I had a couple of questions. First, the communities that you looked at for comparison as to just, you know, what were some other folks doing? With regards to SB nine. How did you choose those communities? And do we have any more recent information about? San Mateo communities, San Mateo County communities, or other communities like Redwood City that have a. Strong track record in building housing rather than Cupertino, which has had difficulties doing so.
Thank you, Commissioner, for your question. I think I'm going to turn that to, I think it's Judy. She came on the screen. I hope I got that right. Thanks.
Um, yeah, so when, when we started looking at the other jurisdictions. We, we wanted to choose kind of different cities, so larger cities like San Jose. And then we looked at Los Altos and Mill Valley because they had a pretty strong urgency ordinance. Which is kind of what we were given direction to look at from the housing subcommittee. In terms of what's happening within San Mateo County, we are yet to. You know, look, look at what our neighboring jurisdictions are doing as we prepare for the community workshop. With Apollo was a Redwood City planner and he did inform me that they're going to be moving forward. With, with just a permanent ordinance, which they are working on. And I believe they'll bring it forward in April. But in terms of Belmont and, you know, City of San Mateo and some of the other cities near San Carlos. We will be looking at them as we prepare for the community workshops. We can bring back more information.
Thanks. And if I could follow up on that, I mean, when you're asked it, I understand the staff's request, right? Which was to go look at other folks doing an urgency ordinance. And it seems that the nature of the urgency ordinance was really to. Stop development before it started occurring, for whatever reason. If you didn't, you know, if you wanted to create design guidelines to make sure that that was in place first or whatever it may be. So it was. So it was a certain kind of, of city that would put in place an urgency, an urgency ordinance, if I'm reading that correctly. So what was the council's thought or what was staff's thought in wanting to put forward the urgency ordinance? And then I wanted to also ask about the choice to not do ADUs and JADUs.
So Judy, I think I'm going to answer that. And maybe you can add to, you or Andrea or Rucha can add to that. So, so what, where I would, I think I would start sharing with you, you know, why, why staff felt it was important. And then maybe why we limit the size to eight hundred square feet? And why do we recommend not allowing ADUs and JADUs of subdivided, SB nine subdivided types of applications? The reason for that is because several years ago, maybe it's a longer now, and sort of not losing track, but you know, time. Needs to be a little bit of a blur. But we actually went through an exercise with the community on single family house size. So we actually had a, I don't know if it was an eight member advisory committee. That worked with staff and consultant teams to tackle the question about how much single. How much square footage or, you know, how do we control the masting and bulk of single family homes? So this was something that was directed to staff by the city council at the time. Following community concerns that houses were just getting too big. And they're not really fitting in with the neighborhood, maybe the character is changing. So go work with the community to figure out how to change our, our zoning standards. So that development can be better fit in the neighborhood. So through that exercise, ultimately what was adopted was a, a maximum floor area. So this is a totally new standard that we didn't have before. We did look at other aspects of design. To, to control the scale, but ultimately what are, what was very important to the city, the community and the commission. And also at the time, to put it in place and numerical sort of tool to control. The size of single family development. Us gone through this exercise not that long ago, and now SB nine, you know, kind of coming into play and realizing that. Be able to really control additional development on single family parcels. We want, we thought we would take the conservative route and just go with the minimum that the state required to do. Until we can have a broader discussion with the community, because we're in a little bit different times now, and maybe there's a little bit more appetite. Maybe perhaps in some neighborhoods and maybe not in other neighborhoods. We won't know until we have that conversation. But maybe there's more appetite for allowing more development. You know, than the, the minimum state provisions. And now just going to go ahead and turn it over to Judy or Andrea if you want to add anything to that.
Um, sure, yeah, I'll, I'll add to the, you know, why we're not allowing ADUs and or JDUs. So that's, that provision only applies with the SB nine lot split. But without the lot split, you know, ADUs and JDUs will be allowed. In addition, during our research, we found that some other cities are not allowing ADUs and JDUs. So we wanted to, you know, like Lisa said, be consistent with what we're seeing in our research. In addition, our existing ADU and JD ordinance is pretty generous. So yeah, looking at some of the options to still build them under our ADU and JD ordinance. And finally, using JDUs. You know, have a different set of standards and SB nine ordinance has a different set of standards. So applying them on the same parcel would be very complex.
If I could ask just another quick follow up then, and I understand, Lisa, thank you for the history of the single family. Ordinance that we put in place. And I'm wondering if we didn't think that the. I think, so tell me what was in the bill and what we ended up clarifying. The, the minimum front setback, same as the underlying zoning of four feet. Is that something that we chose? Or I thought that there was something already in the bill that would have prevented. Kind of the thing that you said the community reacted to in this, you know, with the monster home that was like to the edges. Of the parcel that the bill had in it some provision about setback? Or am I wrong? Was that only our rule on top?
Yeah, well, the state requires that, you know, if somebody wanted to build a structure, you know, whether that's. Well, actually, it's not any structure, but basically it's kind of the same for ADUs and these new SB nine units. So if you wanted to put one in place, you can be as close as four feet away from the side property lines. You can be as close as four feet away from the rear property lines. But the state is silent on the front setback. So to avoid any misinterpretations of what the state law says or doesn't say. In the urgency ordinance, we clarified that for, for the front setback. Because the state is silent on that, that the front setback for these units would be the same as for any single family development. Which is, I believe, a fifteen foot front setback for the first floor. And then a nineteen foot setback for the second floor. That remains the same. I mean, that would be for any single family development. So we, and again, this is just front. But the sides and rears, you know, we don't have, you know, the choice of the matter because the state says we have to allow. Four, four feet if somebody wants to be as close as four feet away from the side and rear.
Right, right. Okay. All right. Thank you, Chair, for letting me get more than a couple of questions at the same time. And I will yield just a little.
Sure, I think Commissioner Garvey has a question and then I, and then I'll have one after her.
Thank you very much, Chair Roof, and thank you, Lisa, for that excellent presentation. A, a special thank you for, I didn't realize that the city had a website where we could. Sign up for updates. I appreciated you putting that on the screen and I'll be signing up to receive those updates. That's a great idea. I had one question. If, if we as a city were to allow for ADU and JADU. On split lots, would this potential for additional development count? Towards us as a city meeting our new arena housing numbers that we need to meet in our next housing element that's coming up?
Yes, under the state housing element law, we do get to count in ADU. And I believe we also get to count the JADU. So every unit is counted.
All right. Thank you. Thank, thank you, Chair Roof. That's my only question.
I'll ask a question and then continue to invite questions from the RDRC or planning commissioners. Mine is the sixteen foot height limit. So that would. In, in effect, that means only single story buildings could be built for the. As a new SB nine unit. Am I getting that right?
Um, well, generally speaking, I think so, yes, but there could be situations where you could build, you know, within that, you know, maybe. A loft type of, you know, maybe a half or a loft within that.
A floor for short people.
If Andrea or Judy have any, you know, they kind of looked at that based on research. Is there anything else you'd add to that?
Yes, Andrea, I can speak to that.
Sure, just to kind of piggyback on what Lisa mentioned earlier with the. Previous discussions about house size and masing. One of the intentions behind limiting the height to sixteen feet is that were we not to do that. It would allow second story units to be four feet from the side and rear property line. And that's a little bit of a concern until we do additional analysis. Because the current code allows second stories to be nine feet from the side property lines and fifteen from the rear. So it seemed like a pretty big allowance without more study and discussion in the community. And so that's why that was limited to the, to the sixteen feet foot height for, for now, under the urgency ordinance.
Okay, thank you. And my next question is on the, on the lot splitting. And on this, this list of definitions, I think these are the city's composition, city putting these forward, right? The definitions say that the split has to be perpendicular to the longest property line. And also that the lots, the resulting lots have to have street frontage. So as I see that geometry, that means lots that are. A lot of our lots in San Carlos are deep where they're narrow on the street frontage and go a long ways back. You wouldn't really be able to split one of those lots typically. Because of the forty sixty rule and that geometry. So that would really, with these rules, most lots that are deeper than they are wide would not be able to be split. Am I understanding that correctly?
I'm gonna see if I can ask Andrea to assist with that question. I think she's looking that for that. Thanks, Andrea. Or maybe we can come back to that one.
Andrea, did you, did you get that question I was asking?
I did, I was just looking through the.
Do you want to, do you want to, we could go to another question if you like.
That would be great and I'll pop back in.
Okay.
Or while Andrea is going through it, I can, I can take that question.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, so that requirement is directly taken from our subdivision chapter for the. Strict requirement, but whether or not the lots in a residential district like most of the lots will be able to be split. Or not, that feasibility analysis has not been done for this urgency ordinance. But you are correct that those two requirements for subdivision has been directly taken from our zoning code on article seventeen.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
And if I could clarify, in the ordinance, I do see where it's talking about the. Front lot lines being parallel as close as possible to the street. And the side lot lines being at right angles to the street. Are those the provisions you're talking about? Or is it C?
Yes, I was, I was looking in particular at, at. Provision definition, I guess it's C on page, packet page nineteen, says. Existing parcels shall be split approximately perpendicular to the longest contiguous property line. So that means you've got to split it down along the long axis and. But, I mean, perpendicular to the long axis, correct myself there. So. But the resulting lots, I think, have to be on the, have frontage on the street. That's one of the other provisions here. So that means lots that are. Deep, narrow and deep really can't be split with these rules. Which is, and I understand that meets the state's, the state's minimum requirements, but the, what we do is the. The number of lots that would qualify for that provision.
And this, Rucha, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this might, regardless, we have to allow some sort of subdivision. So if our requirements were prohibiting a lot from being able to be subdivided. Again, if it's not falling under one of those categories that excludes lots from SB nine provisions. Then I believe that particular standard would have to be. Not waived, but basically we have to make sure that we're able to create these lots under the, the state law. So I think this is something that is trying to prohibit. Flag lots, but maybe it needs to be cleaned up. Rucha, could you speak to this a little more if you? Know why that particular one was in there?
Yes, so as long as the city adopts objective standards. We can limit the number, the splitting of the lot. So if we are requiring that lots be split perpendicular to the street. And it is not meeting that objective standard, then the cities can limit. The subdivision of the lot, which means the lot split may not be allowed.
Okay, so that's in accordance with being the, being, meeting the minimum state standard, so.
That is correct, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Yakapony has a question.
Thank you, Chair Roof. I'm, just as an aside, I'm interested to learn to see how this evolves on the. Flag lot or the easement opportunity, just exactly to your point, like if you did split it across the lot. How do you legitimately get to the back lot? And can we prohibit people from getting to the back lot? So that'll be, we'll see how that plays out. My, my question, and I'll go back and also say thank you, Lisa, for a very helpful presentation. My, can I just walk through a simple example to make sure I understand? So if there was a lot, five thousand square foot. We could, as a property owner, that parcel could be split under SB nine. And at a minimum, one of those lots. The, the new parcel would have to be a minimum of forty percent. Or two thousand out of five thousand? Is that, is that right? Forty percent of five thousand?
Yes, it would have to be at least forty percent of the, I guess, no smaller than forty percent.
No smaller than forty.
Of the original parcel size.
So in that kind of a five thousand foot arrangement, you could have, no, two thousand and a three thousand or two of twenty five hundred. But, and then, you know, any small combination in between, but. No, you couldn't be below four, two thousand. You could not be an eighteen hundred foot parcel is the point.
I think what the, the law maybe is trying to do is under a subdivision scenario is to try and create equally sized lots.
Okay.
You know, not maybe take a five thousand and then carve out a twelve hundred square foot, you know, lot. So they kind of want to create some, I guess. So they kind of want to create some, I guess, uniformity or some balance there. But should you have a small parcel that, let's say, three thousand square feet under SB nine, you could subdivide it and end up with two fifteen hundred square foot parcels. Because the state allows you to go as low as twelve hundred square feet.
Great. Thank you. Very helpful.
Any additional clarifying questions before we open for public comment? Let's let's open for for public comment. So if you would like to make a public comment on agenda item five A SB nine urgency ordinance, now is the time to speak. May join the Zoom meeting, the website listed, or call the phone number and raise your hand by clicking on the raised hand icon or on the phone by pressing star nine and then star six to unmute. So Sarah or or Vera, I'm not sure who it is tonight. Is there anybody in the waiting room for public comment?
Yes, we have David Tuzman. David, I have unmuted you and you have two minutes to speak.
Hello. Good evening to the commissioners, good evening to the staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this item. My name is David Tuzman. I'm a resident of San Carlos and a member of Peninsula Young Democrats. We, as a club, strongly supported and endorsed SB nine last year. I also called in during the urgency ordinance meeting with the council urging them not to pass it because it will clearly hamper the city's ability to address the housing crisis and it is really not justified as an emergency. I really enjoyed the comments and my questioning from Commissioner Clements asking why we're looking at Cupertino, who is a really known bad actor in trying to address the housing crisis. And we didn't look at actual neighboring cities like Redwood City and San Mateo, who in my understanding, they're not planning to implement any constraints. Just kind of the actual base clarifications that are needed. And also what Commissioner Yakapony said about the like five thousand square foot lot and how the spirit of the law seemed to want equal parcels. But with this additional constraint that the city is putting on of eight hundred square feet, it's obviously making a two tier system on the lot and showing that these new housing units should be less than. And as someone who lives in a multifamily dwelling, actually right on the edge, on chestnut of the multifamily and single family zoning, I can see how having equal lots, equal housing, multifamily and single family blends very nicely. And so all this is to say that I'm pretty disappointed that the city has taken the strong stance against the spirit of the law. And I know we're in compliance with the law, but as as the staff said multiple times, we're doing the bare minimum that the law forces us to do. And that's not really what I would hope for us as a city to be trying to do in the face of a severe housing crisis. And so I know you're not being asked of an action, but if the commission wants to maybe comment on whether they think this exact ordinance should be extended in the next council meeting where it will be coming to a vote, you know, that's that's a policy decision by the council to extend this quote urgency ordinance for a whole year and further constrain the housing production and then really disincentivize this new opportunity that the state has given us.
Okay, thank you. Do we have another caller for public comment?
Yes, we have David Crabbe. David, I have unmuted you and you have two minutes to talk.
Good evening, Chair Roof, and members of the commission and also the design review committee. They didn't even have have a chance to ask any questions yet. Anyway, I'm curious about a couple of things. Number one, I don't know why we are so against flag lots. I live in a flag lot. I have a neighbor who lives in a flag lot. Flag lots are not a good solution because you add the density and you don't see it on the streets. You just see the front house and the back house. It's a nice way of doing it. I'd like you to reconsider the kind of prohibition prohibiting of flag lots. Second thing is, I also am very concerned about the sixteen foot height limit for the second unit. I think it should be allowed to go up to two stories. I understand the four foot setback thing, and I don't know how we get around that. I don't like the idea of having a two story, literally four feet from the property line. But if there's a way to say the bottom store can be four feet and the upstairs still has a setback and get around the law, I think that would be a way to approach that. I also think that you need to coordinate your thinking with the building departments. Because when you, there are several things that come to mind. Number one, a four foot side setback based on the building code does not meet the fire requirements for having any windows on that side of the building. It's prohibited. You have to have within, have to have a maximum, a minimum of five feet from a side property line to put a wall in a house. So I think you need to coordinate that. Second is when you have two or three buildings on a given site, the building code implies that there's a property line between them, just a fictional property line. And you have to have at least a five foot setback on each side for that for fire separation. But I think you really need to talk to the building department about how your planning decisions relate to the the building department code. And I'm saying that as an architect, so I've dealt with this before. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, let's let's move to the next caller, if there is one. There is another caller in the waiting room?
Yes, we have Benj Azos. I have unmuted you and you have two minutes to speak.
Hi. Thank you for the opportunity to the to address the commission. I'm a single family homeowner homeowner up in the San Carlos hills. And I really think that we should be building more multifamily housing through the entire city and in my neighborhood as well. The eight hundred square foot limit is too small. It really is disincentivizing homeowners to take the opportunities to build more new homes. And I echo the earlier comment about the about Commissioner Clements' comments. Taking an example from Redwood City and San Mateo feels like it's going to be a little bit more accurate to our area than some than Mill Valley or Cupertino. Yeah, in general, I just think the urgency ordinance shouldn't be pushed past forty five days. I really think this is we've kind of had enough time to study this. Thanks.
Thank you. Next caller in the waiting room?
Next, we have Kathy Baird. Kathy, you have two minutes to speak and you're unmuted.
Okay, thank you. I've lived in the same house in San Carlos for almost forty years now, which is really incredible to me. And I'd like to say that I support the creation of multifamily housing throughout San Carlos. The proposed urgency ordinance restricts units to a maximum size of eight hundred square feet, which is also the minimum size allowed by SB nine. This is the size of a one bedroom apartment. Eight eight hundred square feet is too small for a maximum unit size and certainly should not include the garage space. If one single family house can be, say, twenty six hundred square feet or more, which it can here, why would we not allow, say, a duplex to contain two thirteen hundred square foot units, for example? That's the kind of project that would appeal to me as a homeowner. And it would not bother me if my neighbors decided to do something like that. It makes more sense to me to live next to a multifamily situation than next to a giant single family house. Housing, of course, only one family. I also urge the city, if you if the city continues with this ordinance, which I hope it doesn't, to modify the wording that refers to a current and immediate threat to public peace, health, welfare, and safety. And while this wording may have come directly from SB nine, according to city staff during the city council meeting that I I watched, this language is inflammatory and overblown, and it does not belong in an ordinance of the city of good living. Unless good living is meant only for some people and not for others. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller?
There are none at this time.
Okay, we'll give it just a moment, see if anybody else.
We do have Dr. Hack.
Okay.
Dr. Hack, I will unmute you and allow you two minutes to talk.
Welcome.
Can you hear me?
Now we hear you.
Great. Thanks for the opportunity to address the commission and thanks for your thoughtful approach around thinking about SB nine and how it affects San Carlos. I wanted to say a couple of things. One, that I fully support the commission's idea to extend review of the impact of SB nine on in San Carlos for the next ten months or whatever it is. And also, I hope that the commission takes into account the impact on the wildlife around here, especially in the hills of San Carlos, as we think about multi-unit housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the waiting room?
There are none at this time.
Okay, give it a few seconds here. And if not, we'll, we can close the public comment. I don't think we need a motion or a roll call to do that. And we can just move to the deliberations and RDRC members, please, I hope you understood you could speak up with questions earlier and you're certainly welcome to now. And there's no formal action required or requested, but but this is our opportunity to to provide suggestions. And so would anybody like to to jump in with thoughts? Vice Chair Clements, please.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you to staff for explaining more what was behind the urgency ordinance. As I think about San Carlos, I think it is a city of good living. I appreciate the last or second to last speaker's point about who is this a city of good living for? And I think we've talked about the need to add housing and like to think that we as a community, to think about different types of housing in different places. So I was very excited about SB nine as an opportunity for communities, an opportunity for homeowners to do different things they might have wanted to do with their lots, but would have had a hard time getting approvals potentially. But really am supportive of a a gentle density in certain locations, which I think SB nine can allow. I have to say that I was very, very disappointed that we had been one of the cities to pass an urgency ordinance limiting SB nine developments and I am not in favor of extending this for a full year. I know staff work does take time and good staff work takes quite a bit of time. But I I urge us to get through that staff work as soon as possible, given that the urgency ordinance has already been passed. But you know, if I was on the council, I would not be voting for an extension in in on Valentine's Day. So I wanted to say that I I was hoping that we could be a little bit more what's the right word, perhaps innovative with our thoughts while the engine is running. Not stop the engine and wait and plan the whole trip, but you know, let's get in the car. Let's get on the train and start getting there and then figure out exactly you know, how how it could enhance the community at the same time. I think the point of the state law was that it should further production. So I don't want to, I don't want to delay that further. And I while I made this comment earlier, too, I do understand staff being asked to look at communities that were doing urgency ordinances. But really, those six communities that were listed, with the exception of San Jose, really not the group that we should be in, given how forward thinking we are, I would say, on housing issues. So anyway, I would like, you know, I think it'll be good to think through design and how these units can be constructed so that they are compatible with nearby uses. But I think we should do, personally, I think we should do everything in our power to make this law work in as many ways as possible for as many kinds of configurations as possible. And still, you know, have at least minimum setbacks and still follow the the law, obviously. So those are my general comments. I think the more that we do of this kind of elective density, I think it will help the arena to be achieved. And I think it will you know, it'll just provide some diversity that we need of product types throughout the city. There just are not enough kind of different price points of places to live here at all, you know. So we need more of a range of products to do that. So I'm very supportive of the goals of the state law and of people being able to start planning quickly as to what they would like to do. So those are my comments. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Garvey.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Roof. I too think that more people deserve the opportunity to live in San Carlos and SB nine provides a path towards this. There are other paths, but SB nine provides a path. I agree that the ten month timeline that we're taking to evaluate this seems long. And I would encourage staff to try to be expeditious and efficient in the review so that it doesn't take the full ten month period. Especially in light of the housing element that's coming up, it would be helpful to know in advance where what contribution might additional development from SB nine provide the city and how does that fit into the overall arena and policy determinations that are being made for the housing element. And those, I think those are my comments for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Commissioner Clements' hand is still raised, but I think maybe that's just from before.
Remnant. Thank you, Chair. Although I will have one more comment, but I want to let others.
I suspect that that might be the case. But it's nice to get everybody's initial thoughts on the table and then we can have a second round. Maybe I'll jump in with a thought before opening up to other people as well. I also think we as a city should act in good faith in in trying to achieve the intent of the law. But I do understand the difficulty of, I think, the analogy is building the airplane while it's flying is a hazardous business and and the second story issue is a good example where it would be sure nice to allow a second story, but with some additional additional rules around that so that it's not four feet from the property line all the way up. So that takes some time to figure out how to do that to address, I think, also loosening up the lot split rules, allowing a flag lot or to allow splitting of lots that are that are deeper than they are wide would be very valuable. But but it does take some time to to make those to make those rules and to get feedback on them. So I understand it takes some time. Ten months does sound like a lot of time, maybe too much. So that's, those are my initial thoughts and I'll open it for additional thoughts from commissioners and RDRC members. Commissioner Yakapony?
Thank you, Chair Roof. And I hope that if our fellow RDRC members have some comments to add, they're not shy, but always great to get their perspectives and welcome those voices. I think I would simply add two things. First is with the housing crisis we have, the intent of SB nine is the right intent. is the right intent. And I'm supportive of rethinking how, and I really appreciated how Vice Chair Clements put it. How do we as a community create a greater diversity of supply, right? More, more products on the shelf that people can buy in service of home, a home that they can afford here in the city of good living. I, I think, you know, the period that I had the privilege of going through with some of you in the development of our updated single-family housing regulation was the benefit of listening to the community. And I think we are a better community as the result of creating the opportunity for public dialogue. And therefore, I, I can't judge how long is the right amount of time. I respect the comments that 10 and a half more months may seem long. I don't know. But I would not at all encourage city council in any way to short-circuit a due period of listening to our fellow citizens and get their input. This is not the community of any one of us. This is a community of all of us. And I look forward to that, that process and that you know, that journey with our, our fellow San Carlosians. So that'd be my end.
Thank you. Any additional thoughts in the first pass? And then we can take a second pass. Vice Chair Clements, did you have some additional thoughts?
Can you hear me, Chair?
Oh, Commissioner Bradley, welcome. Yes.
Yes, I, I've been on and it's a, a real test for me to keep quiet for more than a half an hour. Yes, this is really stimulating. I've been on the Planning Commission, as you know, for over five and a half years now. So I'm really going out, but I've lived here about 30 years, so I won't be leaving. I just want to say, I think we, what the state, the governor and the senators and assembly people didn't look at was traffic and parking. And in relation to building two units on one lot or a lot split and four more units. It's all we can do is I've been on the RDRC and I enjoyed it very much. And one of the things we have to look at, of course, in Planning Commission projects too, is, is parking. Do we have enough onsite parking? And if not, do we have enough on-street parking? We don't even have enough now, and that's part of our traffic problem. So I'm disappointed that they, they said nothing about this. I think it just maybe happened too quickly at the state level, even though it took them a year, I guess, if not more. So I'm, I'm glad we're looking at other cities. I think there's not too big a danger to look at a city that has been anti-growth and see what they're doing and not do that, perhaps. Just a, just a comment there. I think it's a, it's a challenge that our staff and our council and our citizens, I hope that people get the word and know that this is going on. So far, I've just been amazed as a planner that we haven't heard from more people for a year about this. We certainly do when somebody wants to build a second story on their one-story house. So this is more consequential. That's all I have for now. Thank you. And I'm glad that I got in finally. I was, I got in right after roll call.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Glad you've been here. Let's take a, we can now take more comments, even second pass comments. But before we jump into that, I noticed in the in the Q and A button that somebody said they couldn't get on the Zoom. Is there a staff member who could perhaps reply to Tom Faletti? If we need to, we can reopen the public comment, get his comment if he wants. I hate to see somebody trying and not succeeding.
Oh, sorry. I was just going to answer that I noticed that question as well, or the comment that the typical Zoom link, the numerical, I guess, the numerical, I guess, identifier for the Zoom link wasn't working. However, this is the one that we use all the time. So we apologize for any technical glitches. This is something that we're going to have to look into. I'm not sure why it didn't work. But if Tom is still here, I don't believe I heard a Tom during public comment. You know, through the chair, you could always hear from that person.
Yeah, I see. He just commented that he's waiting for the tree ordinance. So we'll, we'll get to that in a few minutes. And hopefully he can figure out a way to join then. If not, if not on Zoom, then just by calling in on the phone, that's a good backup. Vice Chair, Vice Chair Clements, you have an additional thought before we close this session?
Thank you, Chair. And I think I started to speak before, but anyway, I appreciate all the commissioners' comments. I also would really value hearing from the RDRC members to the extent you have thoughts about the dimensions and the urgency ordinance. So one other topic I, I'm concerned about bringing up potentially because I don't want it to delay further the implementation of the state law. But the issue of affordability of the units created has come up in other communities and I am just wondering as staff brings this forward, if they are able to look at other communities that are trying to figure out, is there anything that, is there any way that with this ordinance could also ensure that some of the units created are affordable or incent them? Obviously, the intent of this law is to let property owners take actions without a lot of staff interference because that causes delays and rejections in some places and some communities. But I'm wondering if the city council could consider, or we could ask that staff also look at, are there ways to incent affordability in the, along with the creation of the units? So I think that was, it's kind of a comment. And Chair, if I just want to clarify, I know this, this is a study session. So are we allowed to make motions or is this, are we just here to talk and staff is just getting our feedback?
I think I can handle that. I mean, there's, there's, this is a pure study session and there's no action agendaized tonight to, to pursue each one of you are able to kind of say kind of preferences that you have, but there can't be any common action by the, by the commissioner or the RDRC members.
Perfect. Thanks for clarifying that, Greg. So I guess my final, my final comment would be to make sure that staff reflects in comments that the city council in their reconsideration of the urgency ordinance could consider not extending the urgency ordinance or alternately extending it for six months, maximum of six months. So those would be my comments on that. Thank you.
Thank you. I see that Eugene Sakai has a comment. Welcome.
I do. Thank you. I've been listening with a lot of interest to this and quite frankly, still formulating my own thoughts as a committee member. But as a practicing architect, I thought I might share my thoughts with the group here tonight. It's interesting at these, at these hearings where there's no project per se being discussed that the, the members of the public that show up are generally, you know, those who've been studying the passage of, of, of laws like this and, and, you know, generally following them with interest and perhaps even advocates of, of programs such as these. I think it's a much different environment as, as Chair, former RDRC Chair Committee Bradley referred to when there's a project at hand where at the RDRC even a code-complying second-story addition or code-complying new two-story home can generate mounds and mounds of neighborhood opposition. And so in theory, I, I think it's great to, to opine on, on, on the idealistic desire to produce housing units. But in reality, the, the law is written completely disincentivizes any, any profit motive to propose a project. You know, that the lawmakers of SB nine would have intended. The, the limit of the 800 square feet relative to the land value just makes it an economic non-starter. And so a couple of San Carlos's ordinance with the others that I'm seeing throughout the Bay Area and perhaps even up and down the entire state. You know, I, I have a feeling that within a few years, even more draconian draconian laws are going to be coming down from Sacramento upon cities and taking further power away from cities to legislate and shape housing production. And I think that's sort of the opportunity that's here in front of the Planning Commission and the City Council over these next months is the opportunity to really think about. And it's, it probably will take at least 10 and a half months to think about a solution that maybe is, is that compromise that, that no one is happy with, but ultimately ends up being a situation where a developer does have financial incentive to move forward with an SB nine project. And the community can accept it, even though they might not be happy about it. I feel that that's going to be probably at least a 10 and a half month exercise to craft such such a set of standards that creates that win-win both for the community, future citizens who have yet to move here and those who are already here. That, that's a very difficult balance to strike. And I, I, it would be amazing to achieve that within a year's time, to be perfectly honest. But I appreciate that it's a, it's a difficult set of rules to grapple with. And perhaps buying time by preventing SB nine applications from coming forward as this current emergency ordinance is doing is the right thing to do. I think the real work is in the next, is in the next months to come up with something that honors the intent of SB nine incentivizes developers to create these units and is something that the community can ultimately accept, perhaps begrudgingly.
Okay. And thank you for your thoughts. Any additional thoughts before we, before we close this agenda topic?
I, Bradley here again. I, I just want to second what Eugene just said. I think we, we really need to survey our population and, and find out what the people who have spent millions of dollars and buying a single-family home for their family would do. Not that I'm against higher density, but not in some of the smaller lots we have in the, in the town, in White Hills and White Oaks area. It's important to hear. Otherwise, we'll hear from them in a negative way later.
Okay, thank you. I had one, it's, it's more of a question, I guess, that the, the city urgency ordinance refers to excluding the houses, lots that are in a fire hazard zone. What, what is, do we have a defined fire hazard zone in San Carlos? And what does that encompass?
That encompasses, I believe it's everything that's within the wildland urban interface. But I want to defer to Andrea. She might be more familiar. I just want to make sure that definition didn't change.
Thanks, Lisa. Yes, it would be within the wildland urban interface. The Building Division has several maps that determine the, the various levels of risk within the city for wildfire. So there are already specific regulations such as building materials, vegetation, things like that, that apply to those lots to varying degrees. And so depending on where it would fall within that district would determine, you know, the level of fire hazard associated with it.
Okay. What sounds like when we give you my opinion in response to this, that when we, when the city makes adjustments, loosens this up a little to make it more practical, that we need to be need to look at the fire hazard issues. I can imagine you don't need to exclude all the hills of San Carlos. That's a big part of the city, but there certainly might be some areas that you wouldn't want to double the density just because of safety. So that's my, my final thought in, in achieving the right balance going forward.
And I can clarify, Chair Roof, there are varying levels within that designation. So not all, all properties within the WUI are created equal in terms of fire hazard. So to your point, it could be, you know, looking at the ones that are at the most extreme risk versus ones that maybe are not.
Right. So we would want that, I would think we would want that granularity in the rule going forward so that. Okay, I don't see any additional hands raised. Let's move on to our, to our next topic, which is, which is another study session topic on the and it's the update on the protected tree ordinance. So does staff have a presentation on this one?
Yes, we do. Okay. So good evening, Chair Roof, RDRC Chair Garvey, planning commissioners, members of the RDRC, members of the public. I am Ruchan Dandy, Associate Planner. The next item before you tonight is an update to the Protected Tree Ordinance. And before I begin the presentation, I would like to introduce our project team. Adyam Artesich, Principal Planner, and Julia Hoffman, Assistant Planner, who are part of this effort. I would like to note here that there will be no action taken on this item tonight. Could we advance to the next slide, please? In today's presentation, I will be going through the background and history for the topic. Objective of the presentation, proposed updates to the ordinance, questions by the commission and committee, followed by time for public comments and discussion. Before I move forward with the update, I want to jog your memory on why the Protected Tree Ordinance was adopted on an urgency basis by the council last year. The intent of this urgency ordinance was to introduce more restrictive interim protective ordinance, which would temporarily, which temporarily replaced the then-existing Protected Tree Ordinance. This allowed our city time to research and prepare a more comprehensive permanent ordinance for council consideration. And without the urgency ordinance, our city couldn't stop or slow down pre-removals. While, while a new, more effective ordinance is being prepared that complying, complies with the environmental management element of the general plan. That complying complies with the environmental management element of the general plan. Please note the urgency ordinance adopted in twenty twenty one, the July of twenty twenty one is still under effect. So giving you a little bit of background on this project. On May tenth, twenty twenty one, the City Council held a study session on protected trees. Which included mainly reviewing penalty fees and replanting policies from neighboring jurisdictions. At that time, there was a general consensus from the City Council to move forward with a comprehensive update of the existing protected tree ordinance. Council also expressed interest in moving forward with an urgency ordinance. To restrict protected tree removals slash pruning while staff worked on a permanent ordinance. On June fourteenth, twenty twenty one, the interim urgency ordinance was adopted for a period of forty five days. With the possibility to extend. On July twelfth of twenty twenty one, the urgency ordinance was extended for a period of ten months and fifteen days to allow staff time. To work on the permanent ordinance. After that, on September seventh, twenty twenty one, staff held a study session with the planning commission for inputs on topics of consideration. Comments and direction from the planning commission. Since then, staff has been working towards incorporating the comments from the planning commission within the permanent ordinance. Tonight, we will be focusing on an update to the ongoing work. Completed work and receive comments on the permanent protective tree ordinance. Again, I would like to note here that there will be no action taken on this item tonight. Since the study session in September last year, staff has been working towards preparing a comprehensive protective tree ordinance, like I mentioned before. Which involved, the work involved a peer cities research for best practices. Programs, policies around invasive tree species removal, general procedures and policies, fees and fines. Then staff also researched the role of the arborists in each of these cities. Basically, the roles and responsibilities for the city arborist. We conducted regular meetings with the city retained arborist for expert advice. Conducted pre appraisal study and identified opportunities for public education. Next slide please. Before I dive into the proposed changes, I would like to define two terms that will commonly occur throughout this presentation. For protected trees, the protected trees in our ordinance falls under two categories. First is the significant tree and the second are heritage trees. For significant trees, they are mostly size based, so any tree that is eleven inches in diameter. Outside of bark measured at fifty four inches above natural grade are considered as significant trees. So the highlight in yellow. Represents the proposed changes, which I will go through more in detail in the next few slides. And going to the heritage trees, heritage trees are mostly size and species based. As you can see on the slide in front of you, the species that are indicated are categorized as heritage trees. Then there are certain species regardless of size are not protected, which are. Indicated at the bottom of this slide here. In the next few slides, I would like to summarize the major proposed changes within the permanent ordinance. Please note, the permanent ordinance is majorly based on the current urgency ordinance, which is in effect. And with few changes that are highlighted in red in the slides. Under the first topic, protected tree definitions. As a standard practice of measurement for all trees, the measuring criteria is proposed to change from circumference to diameter. That makes it easier for planners and arborists to review applications. And the measuring height has been changed, is proposed to change from forty eight inches to fifty four inches as measured from the natural grade. Which means previously the ordinance required to measure at forty eight inches, but now we are recommending to require it at fifty four inches, which is a standard practice. Under the second topic, reasons for tree removal, the six tree removal criteria remains unchanged from when you had last reviewed it. Under the third topic, the fees were proposed to increase from twenty five hundred to five thousand. Or appraised value of tree, whichever is greater. So with within the permanent ordinance, the appraisal method to be utilized is specifically enumerated, which is the trunk formula technique. That was not previously specified in the ordinance. The fourth topic, notification requirements remains unchanged at this time. Next, the replanting requirement for heritage tree removals is proposed to change. Specifically for replanting requirement, applicants can now choose to select from the heritage tree list within our ordinance. Versus previously in the urgency ordinance, a same species or in kind tree replacement was required. So that requirement has been removed now. Under definitions, staff is proposing to add additional definitions within the ordinance that would help clarify and efficiently implement the protected tree ordinance. These include new definitions for community of trees, tree protection zone, drip line, construction activity, root zone. City retained arborist definition, fruit trees, etc. And in the next topic, tree protection measures for development. Our staff is proposing to add another requirement to disclose. On the site plan, all protected trees within thirty feet of the construction activity. Irrespective of the project or the property boundary, which means that. Any tree, any protected tree within thirty feet of the construction activity, even if it is within the neighboring property, will have to be disclosed within the site plan. Next slide please. In addition to the actual ordinance text as reviewed in the previous slides. That will be under council consideration, the staff is also preparing supplemental documents and tasks. These are the administrative guidance document, preferred tree list, streamlining processes. Identifying resources for tree data such as tree performance, tree risks, etc. Identifying citywide projects where arborist expertise could be utilized. And identifying opportunities to share knowledge and resources regarding trees. If the ordinance gets adopted. These documents will not be formally formally adopted within the ordinance text. Staff strongly believes that these supplemental tasks and documents will help implement the ordinance effectively. I also wanted to highlight that the Public Works Department is undergoing a separate effort. To inventory, document and map all city trees, which will eventually help to inform the preferred tree list. This study by Public Works is at a very initial stage and is not part of the protective tree ordinance project. Next slide please. So looking at the project timeline, the protected tree ordinance project. Will come back to the planning commission on March twenty first. Where staff will be requesting a formal recommendation for the permanent ordinance to the city council. During this time, staff anticipates the ordinance and the supplemental documents fairly complete for review. On April eleventh, staff anticipates to go before city council for the first reading of the permanent protective tree ordinance. Followed by April twenty fifth, the second reading. If adopted, the new permanent protective tree ordinance would be effective on May, May twenty fifth of this year. The urgency ordinance, which was adopted last year, is set to expire on May twenty seventh. This concludes my staff presentation, again, I am Ruth Chadande, I'm happy to answer any clarifying questions on my presentation. And staff memo, which is which is part of the project staff packet. We also have with us again Andrea Marticich, Principal Planner, to answer any questions from the planning commission and RDRC. Thank you.
And thank you for a very nice presentation. Do we have any clarifying questions from the planning commission or the RDRC before we open for public comment? Vice Chair Clements.
Thank you Chair, I wanted to see if I was understanding the slide correctly, can you go back to. And thank you for this presentation, Roshan, that was quite thorough. Could you go back to the slide please, that is looking at that said, the removal and replacement requirements? Thank you, so number five, the replanting requirements. This seems to say that you. What about the replacement requirements for non heritage trees, but for significant trees that are removed? Yes, absent here, does that mean it's not being changed, or what? Or is it not? Being recommended, this seems to make specific something that was less specific.
Okay, so so the replacement requirement for heritage trees. Would be required to be from the heritage heritage tree list, that is. Within our definition section, so previously in the urgency ordinance, we were requiring in kind replacement, like for example. If a white oak is removed, a white white would have to be replaced, would be would have to be the replacement tree. But now we are not requiring that because through our. Discussions with the arborist, that doesn't seem to be the best practice, just in case that tree is not well performing in that particular location.
Really, if I could clarify, my question was for non heritage tree removal, so for significant. Balls, what is the replacement requirement?
Yeah, so for significant or protected trees which are not heritage trees. The replacement trees would have to be from our preferred tree list.
Okay. Thank you. Let's all cheer, thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'll ask a question, if if the tree is under the thresholds that are specified here, then there's no constraint on what a property owner can do. I gather.
Sorry, I did not understand.
If 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 a tree is is slightly less, has a slightly smaller diameter, then the property owner is free to remove it if if they want, and there'd be no oversight of that.
Correct, so if they do not qualify under protected tree, then they do not have to apply for a removal application. Yes.
So if a big tree disappears, I guess. It's hard to know what its diameter was, if it's been shredded, but.
So if a big tree disappears and it is not, and the species is not. Under the. Non protected trees, like I had, like is on a slide six. Like if it is not a Bailey green or black acacia, it's not a tree of heaven, fruit tree, Monterey pine or a eucalyptus. Then it would be considered as a significant tree. If it is a huge tree and meets the requirement of a significant tree.
Okay, okay, I understand that. I get, I I guess there's no. Provision for. Making sure that. Trees that are cut really are under the threshold. So the rules that you have don't really. Address that concern, which admittedly is not an easy concern to solve.
Excuse me, yeah, so. Yeah, we do not require an arborist report.
To come measure the tree or something, yes. My last question, I think is a little one. Why are Monterey pines specifically not protected while other pine trees? Could be a significant tree? Just wonder what what we have against Monterey pines in particular.
I'm not sure about that, but I could definitely ask an arborist about that.
Commissioner Roof, I don't think they're native, they're they're native to to California, obviously, but I don't think they're native to San Carlos. I think every single one is a planted tree, I could be wrong on that, but.
I see, okay, I was just curious there.
To our area, of course, but they they're not, they're not the type of tree that that lives very long or thrives too well in our climate. So, but that's what I read.
Okay, okay, thank you, Commissioner Yakaponi, you have a question?
Thank you Chair, yeah, a simple one, Ruth, thank you also for your presentation. Can can you just clarify the point in the replacement tree and the minimum standard? I I think if I read it correctly, there is no minimum standard other than what the arborist said, did I understand that right? For size, if you click to that slide, maybe two down. Next one, it says size determined by certified arborist and based on valuation. And. It. It just strikes me that. Like that's loose. How do we know we're not gonna end up with like a little box and a little tree and. Replacing something that was big and kind of majestic?
Yeah, so our city, we will have under our. Administrative guidance document, the selection of size based on the tree removed, so. That is basically on a sliding scale, so if it is a larger tree, then. Excuse me, I am losing my voice here, so if if. If it's a larger tree, then a larger replacement tree would be required, so there is a sliding scale which which is. Our staff intends to include within the administrative guidance document, so there will be. A guidance for that. And that will be reviewed by the arborist to make sure that it's not, it's not unreasonable, the replacement requirements.
Okay, that was a very helpful answer, and I'll guess I'll just wait till see how it reads when it shows up. But you've clarified the confusion I had by looking at the points on the slide.
And and through the chair, if I could just add to that answer really quickly, I think in the past, we found that, as Ruchu mentioned, a twenty four inch box. Is what has been required regardless of the size of the tree. Or species of the tree, and what we found that, you know, twenty four inch boxes are definitely appropriate in certain situations. But definitely in others do not rise to, you know, kind of the same level. Of significance as the tree being taken out or won't grow to that significance. So our our feeling is that this will actually. Results in in larger trees being required or a bigger variety of trees than just the twenty four inch box. Just based on our experience with with tree permits, and again, reiterating what Ruchu said, it would really be based on. On the city's contracting arborist to decide, you know, what's what's appropriate based on what's being proposed to be removed.
Okay, can, sorry Andrea, can you say, so there is a minimum and the arborist will be free to go above the minimum?
Correct, and and I think also on the on the other hand, and and probably not as often, but. There's also could be situations where, you know, a lot maybe is already overplanted or. Doesn't need another tree just based on on the number of trees on the lot and their health. Or species, I think that's pretty rare, but but on the other hand, it could also go the other way. You know, if a tree is going to be planted and it's not really going to survive, do we really want that to be required?
Thank you.
I have a follow up question on that. Is it the size determined by. A certified arborist or a city arborist? And is the certified arborist, that's somebody that the the developer could hire?
Um, I'll go ahead and answer that, and Rocha, let me leave anything off. Um, as we're dra, you know, drafting this ordinance and, and doing a lot of the research and, um, figuring out really what the community, um. Council and the commission want, um, it's become clear that we, uh, as a city and, and we as staff feel like we do need. Um, a contract arborist that would be, um, hired by the city, so acting in the city's interests. Um, we do have even to, you know, today, um, applicants providing arborist reports from their own private, um, arborist. Today, we require those to be peer reviewed by the city arborist. Um, so there could be some instances of, um, developers providing their own report. However, it's our contention that having, um, a consulting arborist, that's, uh, you know, looking out for the best interest of the city. For tree removal permits, development permits, basically the, the gamut of, um, different things they can comment on is really gonna be key to having. Um, a robust ordinance, um, that, that makes an impact. So it, so it's our vision to have a city retained. Arborist that, that's, you know, figuring all of this out and, and making the, the decisions about, um, these trees.
Thank you for that clarification.
Sure.
Well, I don't see additional questions at the moment, so let's open for public comment. We're gonna go to the slide about public comment. Or. There we go. Um, if you would like to make a public comment on agenda item five B, protected tree ordinance, now is the time to speak. You may join the Zoom meeting at the link shown or call the phone number and, uh, raise your hand. In the, in the Zoom meeting or on the phone, press star nine and star six. In two minutes, do we have people in the waiting room?
Yes, we have, uh, a caller ending in zero seven eight. You are. Unmuted and should be able to speak.
Welcome. If you, two minutes and if you could give us your name, that would be great. We don't hear you. Maybe you're still unmuted.
It looks like they're unmuted.
Is anybody in the waiting room? Maybe they don't know they're teed up.
Perhaps the caller needs to hit pound six.
Well, maybe we should go, is there another caller we can go to on this one?
Yes, we can move on to Tom Filetti. Um, Tom, I will allow you to talk and you have two minutes.
Um, thank you. Uh, my comments, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Okay, my comments have to do with fees, uh, the permit fees themselves. Um, since the last meeting in September, I learned that San Carlos's tree removal permit fees were significantly higher than. Neighboring cities like next door Belmont. Uh, so I, in December, I emailed planning with my request that addressing the permit fees. Uh, should be part of the proposed ordinance, but I don't see anything about that in the, uh, materials that were handed out tonight. Um, it appears that the fees are even higher, um, now than they were in June of twenty twenty when I had a. Poplar tree removed it from my backyard, which cost me four hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty-four cents, and it was a dead tree. Um, what Belmont does is they, uh, send an arborist to assess the tree without charge, and if the tree is dead. Uh, they waive their eighty-one dollar fee, which is significantly lower. Um, I think that if San Carlos's fees were a little bit more reasonable. Um, that homeowners would be more likely to comply with the protected tree ordinances. And so I'm asking the commission and the council. To review the current fees to see if they're really truly justified and reduce them to an appropriate level. And also to provide the arborist free of charge like Belmont does, um, so that, um, homeowner doesn't have to bear that cost. And finally, to weigh the permit fee like Belmont does, if the arborist determines that the tree is dead or diseased. Um, so those are my, uh, requests for, um, the commission and, and ultimately the council to consider. And I'd like to see those kinds of things in the, uh, materials that are handed out or at least made available. Uh, at the next meeting that's coming up here, because I don't see them here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Do we have additional people?
Yes, we have David Crab. David, you are allowed to talk and have two minutes.
Good evening again. This time my comments are in, uh. Speaking for the Sierra Club Sustainable Land Use Committee, uh, they were concerned about the tree ordinance, uh. Our committee is, uh, interested in getting more native, uh, trees in the cities, especially street trees and other types of, uh, things. And I noticed that your, uh, uh, prefer, let's see, the, what do you call it? Uh. Uh, went blank on it here. Um, your heritage tree, uh, list is pretty much native trees, which is fantastic. But then you mentioned that Public Works is creating a preferred tree list. And I'm concerned that Public Works is gonna come up with trees that are not necessarily native trees. Uh, but just trees that they're happy with because they don't tear up their sidewalks. And so I'd like to see if there's, I'm gonna be some coordination between those two lists of trees of what the preferred trees are. Um, we would like to have the native trees because the native wildlife, uh, generally prefers those types of trees. As opposed to some of the English imports or whatever, uh, from other places, China or whatever, you are already eliminating the Chinese, uh, tree there. Uh, so that's one thing. Second thing is, it'd be nice. If the city is doing penalties for removing trees, how about have, creating some incentives for planting the desirable trees that we want? Is there something that could encourage a property owner to, to, uh, you know, install a, a nice heritage tree? On their property and maybe get a, a tax break or some kind of a deal on it or a little, uh, benefit. So those two things we would like to see, uh, again, uh, native trees are more, uh, amenable to native species. Which is more amenable to a, a good environment in the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
There are no callers at this time.
Okay, we'll give it a few seconds here. Going once. Going twice. Okay, let's close the, uh, public comment period. We don't need a roll call for this. Um, let's, um. Get feedback from the planning commission and the R D R C. Any thoughts? I see, uh, let's start with, uh, Commissioner Garvey and then Vice Chair Clements.
Thank you very much, Chair Roof. Uh, I've enjoyed this discussion tonight. There's a couple of things about this, uh. Proposal that I like. One is the, I really support removing the same species requirement for replacement. Um, I think that's a good idea because there are instances where requiring the same species is really not desirable. It may not be desired from a homeowner, but it may not be desirable also from an arborist standpoint. So I really liked the. The, the role of the arborist and the flexibility that, that there is to pick from a list as opposed to requiring. The, the exact same species go in. And the second thing that I liked is that if a, that if a larger tree is removed, and I think this builds on, uh, Commissioner Yakaponi's comment. If a larger tree is removed, then there's a, a larger replacement that's required. This makes sense, and I also like that the arborist recommendation plays a large role in this. So those were two of the things that really bubbled up to the top for me. And, um, yeah, I really appreciated the discussion this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Clements.
Thank you, Chair. And, um, I wanted to thank the caller, the speaker, Tom, I think it was Filetti. For doing the right thing and paying his fee. I, um, I agreed, by the way, that, that seemed. The fee that he cited, four hundred fifty-five dollars to have a dead tree removed, does seem on the high side and I'm. Um. I wanna make sure that our fee schedule does not disincent the kinds of behaviors that we're trying to incent. Especially if they're not. Um, otherwise going to be part of a development proposal, right? So it's just private owners kind of acting on their own properties. And really, we rely on them to come forward. So I agree that, um, although the fee schedule is not being looked at tonight, that. If it is going to be reexamined, especially in light of providing a contract arborist. That we make an effort to make the fees reasonable, especially if you're removing a tree. That is dead, that, that did seem to make a lot of sense to me, but I. We'd be open to other communities and their fee schedules too. Um. So a couple of very minor technical points, I noticed that in the packet, the draft ordinance. That, um, is associated with this. I, I think it's with this. There are multiple. Copies of it, so I think it's the latest one. Um. The word trimming is used but not defined, and so I would think that you'd wanna define it. I assume the default definition is anything that stops short of pruning is considered trimming. A tree, but it is used, and so, um, I would suggest that gets defined. And then also just for, I think Commissioner Yakaponi's. Point, it probably could use a couple of references to administrative guidelines in here. For the, um, substantive sections that would be, you know, defined further or determined. Further in a separate document, administrative guidelines, so that anyone could pick up the. Law and then realize, oh, I also have to go look at this other document. So just to make it very, um, plain to the public. And to professionals working in our jurisdiction, what they have to know. Um. And so that, that's really it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll jump in with, with some of my thoughts. One of them is that the, um, reasons for, um, allowed reasons for removal, one of them is, um. That it conflicts with development, when there's no alternative. And. I can imagine if that came before us. If that's a fairly subjective, uh, subjective standard to try to, uh, measure a request against. Um, I mean, if there's, if you take it to the extreme, uh, if there's no alternative, of course, there's, you can always not do the development or. Work in that area. So the tree could always win, uh, or, or on the other extreme, you can say. Well, if you wanna put an addition and the tree is there, then, uh, too bad for the tree. So some, I did, it's not easy, I'm sure. But some additional specificity is what would constitute, um, uh, a reasonable, um, development. Situation that would, um. Justify removing a, a tree. This seems very subjective. So that's one of my feedbacks. Um. I was a little concerned about the provision, uh, that was the old provision that would no longer be there, uh, that it, there's. Uh, allowing for removal of a tree that's causing substantial damage. And so some types of damage, um. I wouldn't be so worried about. I mean, if it's a, if a tree is, is buckling the sidewalk, then that wouldn't be, or a walkway, um, or something like that, then. But, um, it seems like that might not justify its removal. But if a tree is, is severely impinging on the foundation of a house. Because the tree was planted too close many, many years ago. Seems to me that could be a, a valid reason, uh, but that seems to be, that option seems to be not here. Maybe a little concerned that somebody could be, um, unduly burdened. So please consider whether. Something for the extreme end of, of, uh, substantial damage might, might deserve to still be allowed. And, um. Um, I like the idea of a city arborist that provides some, uh, consistency of, um, of how, how things are, are, are handled. Um. I think, you know, we wanna avoid the case where maybe a, a big developer hires a favored arborist who gives opinions that are somewhat weighted. Um, in their favor. Um, so having a, um, a more standardized. Measurement approach would be wonderful. Those are, are, are my thoughts. Do we have additional, uh, additional thoughts? Commissioners, R D R C, some of the stuff that's gonna come before you, so we wanna make sure that the, uh, the. Rule is written in a way that we can apply it. Appropriately. And, uh, Vice Chair Clements, your hand is still up, but that's from before. Okay. Well. I think we got some really nice comments from the public. Thank you very much from the commissioners. Thank you. If there are no additional comments, we can, um, we can.
To the chair, um, if I may, if I may clarify just for record of your two things. Um, so, uh, like I heard in the, um, public comment section. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify for record that, um, Public Works is not creating a preferred tree list. They are. They have a project, uh, where they will be inventorizing city trees, now their tree performance, tree data. Which could eventually be utilized by, um, us to prepare a preferred tree list. So, um. Public Works is not preparing a tree, a preferred tree list. We are doing that. So under this project. Um, and then the second thing I wanted to clarify is, um, we will be, uh, we are preparing, uh. A definition for trimming, uh, that will be, uh, that is, you know, being incorporated in the ordinance. And then we will be having references to the administrative guidance documents. So that is in our plan to, um. Uh, include in the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Because maybe, uh, additional comment occurred to me. The pruning, uh, you're limited to twenty-five percent of the canopy. How often? And so have some sort of a, uh. A seasonal, yeah, once per season or something, uh, not once per week, twenty-five percent every week could add up.
Yeah, we do have that for a once a year, so.
Oh, did there? Okay, maybe it just wasn't in the summary that I read, but, um, that, that sounds about right. Okay, let's, let's close this, this topic. No formal action required. So I think we can just move on to the next item in our agenda, which is item six. Reports, correspondence and general information. So starting with, um, letter A, report on recent city council actions. Lisa.
It's Sheriff, um, staff does not have any, uh, reports to update the commission on or the, our commission and R D R C this evening on. Thank you.
Um, planning commission comments or reports? And since this is a joint meeting, R D R C comments or reports? Hearing none, we'll move on to letter C, correspondence.
None for this evening.
Okay, then on to D, planning staff comments, reports and updates of current projects.
Uh, sure, this will be really brief this evening. Um, just a reminder that the next planning commission, um, scheduled meeting. And will actually occur on a Tuesday, so that would be Tuesday, February the twenty-second. And we do have, uh, one item scheduled to come before the commission, and I believe that is a. Let me just double check on that. I think it is a, Andrea, can you remind me, is that a, a billboard that's coming forth on?
Correct, it's a billboard on industrial.
On industrial, yes. And that's the only item that'll be on the agenda for the next time we meet. And that's, I, for my updates.
Okay, well, thank you very much to the staff for excellent presentations, for the public for great comments. Planning commission and R D R C comments as well. We can adjourn our meeting. Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Go ladies, thanks Chair.
Thanks Chair.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night, missionaries.
Everyone, good night.
Thanks Lisa, thanks staff.